I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published.
So moved.
Chris?
Second.
Brian? All right, Chris has moved and Brian has seconded to approve the agenda as published. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as published, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion to approve the published agenda has passed. And Stacy, I'm assuming there's no public participation tonight? Okay. All right, moving on to recognition and thank yous, Dr. Mueller.
Yeah, I have one recognition that I wanted to share this evening, and that was from the La Crosse Community Fund. They had their donation of $1,330 from the Jim's Grocery Bag, and they're very gracious each year, and this year, these funds will go to support the food pantry at the Holman Middle School. So we thank them for their support.
All right, thank you. Moving on to reports and discussion. Dr. Mueller will share the 22-23 district strategic goals. This is for report only and will not appear on a consent agenda.
All right, good evening. So tonight, what I would like to do is basically share about our, as you mentioned, 22-23 district goals, and to show how they're aligned to our strategic plan, and share updates to our strategic plan. What you're seeing in front of you right now, it says history there, because this is what our strategic plan looked like. This was developed and improved in July 27th of 2020. So this strategic plan is a five-year plan of 2020 to 2025. And when we developed this, we had our stakeholder groups of students, staff, community members that all took part and gave input to get to this point and that. So now what you're seeing before you is just a new look to our strategic plan, and also some very, the strategic plan is very important as we go about making decisions and the important work that we all do here in the district. We did refine some of our focus areas and descriptors, which you see off to the right there, to better align with our vision of belong, serve, succeed, our mission and our core values. So tonight, as I talk through this, we did share this in a board workshop with you in August, but I wanted to make sure that we shared that and then showed you and publicly shared what our district goals were for this year. So first up is our focus area of student learning. When you see the previous versus the updated, the words there in the updated that says[193.08][193.11]integrated and comprehensive service delivery model, those words were carefully chosen so that they better align with our mission, and specifically to our mission where it talks about having an engaging and inclusive educational community. So specific to student learning, we wanted to be a little more specific in our goals, so we have something to really work towards, and in our school buildings and our departments, our leaders have what we call scorecards that align to this, that they are working with teams towards improving and reaching these goals. So I'm just going to briefly go through these. You know, graduation rate, 97%. You might be like, well, why isn't that 100%? Well, what we're going off of is past history and what's attainable, what's reachable, and we're hoping, you know, if we get to 100, that's excellent, but we also have some students that actually, for certain reasons, remain in our school system and school district beyond their four-year cohort graduation for many good reasons. Our English Language Arts and Math Goals, 55% of students will achieve proficiency. I want to put that into perspective, because a lot of times people say 55%. The state average was 33.7% for ELA and 33.6% for math. Now, we are currently performing above the state average in many of our peer districts. So the goal is actually focused on meeting students where they are and growing them. There will be definitely students that achieve above and beyond proficiency, and then there will be students that we want to make sure we get to proficiency. So that hopefully gives you some perspective on that. And then our ACT suite, that's a composite score of 21. And character has always been something that our community has said is important to them, so we look at our report card, and then we're also researching what questions should really be on our survey to dig deeper into student character. Within the fiscal focus area, you can see it is actually exactly the same, so there isn't anything to report out on there as a change. And one thing just to point out under our fiscal area is we make sure and ensure that we are fiscally monitoring our expenditures as far as it goes towards our student performance, our cost per square foot is our maintenance and operations. We use that a lot in to make sure that, ensure that we are spending appropriately on our facilities, and then transportation costs per mile, our fund balance as a total expenditure. There's a range we like to be in. And then our expenditures on special programs and support, and then also our fund balance in nutrition services. The special programs of support is important because that's the one that you always have to make sure is balanced out at the end of the year, so that, you know, we want to keep an eye on that. And then fund balance for nutrition services is important because our price on our meals is, depending on how much he has in fund balance, he's able to offer different price range, which he shares each year. Workforce did have some changes. You can see the descriptor has changed from workforce being capable and consistently providing services to recruiting, engaging, and retaining diverse staff. So this is quite a shift, and a very important shift as the landscape outside of our school district changes. So the indicators for this are around staff engagement. We really want to use our survey results to make sure we have, and a lot of times 90% is kind of our standard goal, but we're, want this to be greater than or equal to 95% engagement, because we've been achieving at a higher rate with engagement. Retention rate of our educators, we're going to be looking at this, maintaining that greater than or equal to 90% over a five-year average. And then really, the diverse applicant pool, starting to track ethnicity, but also race data of all applicants, and just seeing not only who our applicants are, and sometimes it's hard to know if, because that information is not required in the applications, but then we're still determining, looking at like, who did we end up hiring, and how does that compare to our population of students we have? So we'll dig deeper into that this upcoming year. We actually changed the name of this focus area, just through a lot of input in the past year, community engagement is what it was changed to. And the reason being is, we used to have, under our customer stakeholder engagement, it was students, parents, community, and staff, which now, we just have this as students, parents, and community. Our staff engagement is under the workforce area. But really, it's going to be important here, listening to their voice, building relationships, and valuing their input to identify opportunities for improvement. As far as the goals that we're looking at this year in this is around open enrollment, really taking a look at, and this is a long-term goal, in three years, to improve what's called our net transfer, like, so the amount of students that are coming in would be more than our, not overall more, but increase to, and then our amount of students leaving or open enrolling out would decrease, so that we can move in the positive direction. And really focusing on belonging, which we've been talking about quite a bit this year, hopefully that message is getting out to many people. And we have survey questions around belonging for students and parents, and just seeing how they respond to that, and if we are, if, you know, I feel like I belong at school, and then for parents, do you feel your family belongs at this school? So just gauging that to ensure that we are reaching our families and our students. And then health and safety, which is our last focus area here. We removed the, where it says prevent and prepare crisis situations. The measure had been at 100% completion for many, a few, the past few years. So right now, it is being monitored still, and as you will see in the upcoming presentation tonight, we continue to make improvements and monitor that area. We just don't have it as part of a key measure on our dashboard. So in our health and safety, we always just monitor our workers' compensation modifier, making sure our workers are safe. The question on the surveys for students is, my school is safe. In other words, do our students feel safe at school? We're digging deep into that, because what does that really mean to a student also? Because safe can have a lot of meanings. And then the other part that came up over the past year is work-life balance for our staff. What does a healthy work-life balance look like, and how can staff sustain that? And then a social-emotional learning screener. There's a lot of work going around how to meet the needs of the whole child, so focusing on that. So overall, this is our dashboard and the work we're engaging in this year. This is what we use to really focus our work and focus our priorities around, and to help us measure what we treasure, is what we say, so that we are improving in the areas that align to our mission, vision, and our values that we believe in. So is there any questions on that? I know you've, we've had a workshop, you've seen a lot of it already. It's just good to publicly have it out there and share that information, so people know what we're working towards as the year goes on, so.
Any questions?
Chris, I was wondering if you could just clarify, what would be the goal of collecting the data for the diverse applicant pool within the workforce?
Yeah, so that's one thing we were talking about a little bit today. It's really figuring out, who do we have actually applying to our district initially, and who do we not have applying to our district? Then how do we reach those folks that we would like to have in our district? And really starting to focus in on, there's research out there that says, students, people like to see people like them so that they can relate to them. So how are we doing as a district? And so it kind of starts with, well, if you don't have applicants, then it's hard to hire those people. So really taking a look at that, and how can we make progress in that? But first, you have to know who they are in that, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right, any other questions?
Okay.
I think that's.
Thank you.
That's it. Moving on to item 8.2. Jill Mason will present the 22-23 safety updates. This is also for report only and will not appear on the consent agenda.
Okay, well, I'm here tonight to present the district's safety updates in Matt Meyer's absence. He and his wife are having, hopefully, a baby today. It wasn't going so great while I was here this afternoon. He was sending emails, and I told him to stop it, but anyway. He apologizes for not being here, but I'm sure you all understand why that is. Okay. So each month, our district safety team meets. We have great conversations. We do a lot of tabletop activities, which means Matt will come to the table, present us with a scenario, and our team has to discuss what we might do to solve that scenario. Everything from a medical emergency to an active shooter drill. Those are really helpful for our team, because our team is diverse. So we have administrators, we have our SRO available, we've had the fire chief come, we have our insurance rep there, we have, I think I already said administrator. So, you know, we're all able to come from a different lens. Dr. Mueller often comes, Melissa from HR comes, so really have a good lens of how that impacts all of the different types of departments, or risk management, or things like that. And this has developed really well over the years. We've done a lot of great work, so we're really proud of our team and the fact that we've been able to come together to discuss some pretty hard things. As you know, we transitioned from Spregio, our anonymous reporting system, to Stop It. We just rolled that out this fall, so as you can see, there were several different communications regarding Stop It. We use this, again, as an anonymous reporting system. You can get it as an app on your phone, we have it on the student Chromebooks. Parents are able to submit anonymous tips or community members, students. We've already received a handful of reports this fall from students, so we know that it's working. The reasons, well, before I get to the reasons, we researched a couple of different anonymous reporting systems. Again, we did look at Spregio again, we did look at Stop It, we looked at a couple of Speak Up, Speak Out, a couple of other ones, and we really felt that Stop It was the best fit for the school district of Holman and a way to transition from Spregio. The biggest piece in any of our reporting systems is to make sure that if students are thinking something's off, if they've heard a threat, we want them to report it. So basically, if you see it, say something. And, you know, if we investigate it and it's nothing, we'd rather do that than have something not being reported, because they thought someone else reported it or didn't think it was reportable. Okay, so why did we make this change from Spregio to Stop It? A couple of different reasons. The biggest one is that Stop It was able to provide us with an after-hours, an after-hours way to collect the tips. And so basically, from 4:00 PM until 7:00 in the morning, they, the Stop It organization collects all of the tips unless it's life-threatening. If it's life-threatening, then they will work with their system and our police department. We will get notified of that, but they have a 24/7 call center, and we've practiced that. We've received the tips on a test basis, and also worked with our Holman Police Department to make sure that that's accurate, along with the La Crosse County. So those, that was the really, the biggest push, is Spregio did not have that option, so we really felt it was necessary for our administrators in the district to make sure that they were able, because we could get a call at 1:00 in the morning, or at 11 o'clock at night, and you feel immediately compelled to address those situations. So that way, this is handled from Spregio, who has crisis people online, and they have trained staff to do that, and then they call our local authorities. All right, and then again, we have the two-way messaging. So when we receive anonymous tips, we're able, it's kind of like when you text each other, or when you message each other, we're able to, so if a tip comes in and basically says, I'm being bullied, I can respond back to that student and say, where? And they might respond back and say, in my third-hour class. And then I could respond back and say, where is your third-hour class? To get, to drill down into the details. And so we've tested that out. We've already had some students write back and forth, so we were able to get a little bit more information, so that we could investigate the situation. Our students right now are very tech-savvy, and so this is a better way sometimes for them than to come in person. Now, our elementary schools primarily have the students come to a trusted adult. They're not typically involved in the anonymous reporting, but we have had some in the upper levels, more like the fifth graders, use this as a tool, not so much this year, but in Spregio in the past. Okay, we have a couple of other safety reporting systems. So Gaggle is our reporting system through our school email. So if there is something in the school email that might talk about suicide, threat, self-harm, something pretty violent, it will get flagged in our email system. So if a student is sending it to another student, it will get flagged and immediately get sent to us as administrators, and then we will work through that situation with the student. If it's severe enough where there is threats of suicide, or again, self-harm, Gaggle will call either myself or Matt, and Greg is also on there as well, Greg Krieger. And we have had that situation happen this summer, and so the Gaggle representative called me and said, there, you know, we've noticed something get flagged through the email. What happens, though, is that email doesn't go through. So if Bridget is sending me an email, I don't get the email. The email gets flagged, and then we work through it. We had to, we had to kind of adjust to that, because some of it is like Bridget sending the counselor an email, and so when the counselor doesn't receive that, we kind of work through, like administration calling the parents, and then the counselor's able to work through, because we don't want that confidence level broken with the student and the counselor. So have tried to work through some of those types of things, but it was really nice. One evening, I was, I received a call from the Gaggle representative. She shared the information and then just said, I really love my job, I really want to make sure kids are safe. So it's not like some tech person just answering phone calls and sharing information. It is really people on the other line who are really caring about kids and want to make sure that they're safe and that good things are happening from the situation. So just wanted to share that. Then Stop It, again, during the school day, administrators receive these emails or these push notifications on their apps, and then again, from 4:00 to 7:00 in the morning, that goes, either stays in a hold, and then the administrators will get a report at 7:00 in the morning of anything that came through in the evening, or it will automatically get flagged into the police department through the county. Speak Up, Speak Out, that is something as part of the Department of Justice Act 143. We don't use that, we have access to it, so it's another anonymous tip. We don't advertise it, because we haven't staffed it, we haven't used it. It's a free app that we're able to use, and then we have to report all of that to the Department of Justice. We have, we just haven't found that that is the most effective tool. Stop It and Spregio in the past have been more effective for us. All right, one of the biggest things that the district rolled out this fall is our standard response protocol. So a lot of work went into really moving to this terminology. It gives us great visuals, they're clean, the directions are very clear, and the actions all have follow-up statements. Okay, and then, this is an example of the information that all of our classrooms have. So each classroom, each school building has this information. It's available publicly, so I don't know, some of you may or may not have heard of I Love You Guys Foundation. I believe that came from the Sandy Hook Initiative. Some of the parents started I Love You Guys, and so this is the standard response protocol that we have adopted. Sometimes there are things that we have in our safety plans that we don't want to share, because we don't want too many people to know about those things, because we don't want it to get into the wrong hands. This is something we want everyone to know about. We want everyone to know this terminology. We've shared this terminology with our local Boys and Girls Club, we've shared it with our YMCA, so everyone is using the same terminology. We also feel that it's important that our fifth graders are using the same terminology that our sixth graders, that our ninth graders, and that us at the district office, our TMT and every other building location. So all of our staff have this. Travis Udell and Matt Meyer's put together an amazing video, really outlining this process for our staff and all of us, so that we can better understand why it is so important. Okay, so some key points. I know some of you may have heard of Alice, and the Alice drills that we do, and the Alice training. This isn't to say that we're replacing Alice, but it enhances, I guess. They work together. So we use the terminology lockdown when a threat is inside the school. That could be a confirmed weapon report, or knowing that a person is dangerous and inside the school. Studies, like the Sandy Hook Commission, show that active shooters never breach locked doors. They have, there have been further studies that show that very minor, specific exceptions to this research exists, but 70% of active shooters, shooter events are over in five minutes, and 90% are over in 10 minutes. So locking your door gives you time and gives you a barrier to keep everyone safe. If you know more, or are in a situation where your security is threatened, we can utilize our Alice protocols. So that might mean we have to evade and defend, it just depends on where you are in that situation. So it's not, again, it's not that we'd abandon those things, but it could, it could just mean that those tactics come out later. Okay, so we're aiming to do more communication with our families during the school year. So after we run a drill, we'll share the protocol utilized, and some common examples of when we use those protocols. For example, after a hold drill, we'll share that sometimes if an individual student or staff member has a medical emergency, we need to use the hold protocol so that the halls can be kept clear. It doesn't necessarily mean there's an active shooter, it just means that we have to hold all the students in their classrooms, so we can complete the medical attention necessary for that student or staff member. Then we have to activate a protocol in a real-life situation, so parents will understand what the protocol is and what might be happening. That will help build understanding, eliminate confusion, and allow responders to efficiently respond. And we've had, we had several of those last year. If you were a parent, you probably remember receiving those, and we all talked about adding the word "medical" to it, so that parents didn't feel like it was constantly threats over and over and over again. All right. So crisis response and recovery, we'd like to highlight this team. They have done a tremendous amount of good work. While we hope we never have to utilize some of these plans, we also know hope isn't a plan in and of itself. Therefore, we prepare resources to respond to critical events, so that more things are prepared, instead of trying to get them ready in the midst of a crisis. When you have a student death, or an active shooter, anything that's happening in the community that's devastating, you don't want to be scrambling for materials or things as you're working through the crisis. So this is instrumental. It can often get overlooked when you're trying to make sure that your facilities are safe, and that you have all those protocols ready. We really need to make sure that our students are taken care of from a mental health standpoint as well. So in this planning, we've been able to share some of our resources and our protocols with other school districts, so we're very proud of that. We also want you to know that while we highlight this group of people, we also have several administrators, other student services, team members that have helped kind of work through these different scenarios and different situations to help figure out what we really want, what we really want for our crisis response and recovery team to do. All right, and then, lastly, we really want to make sure that we're working on a standard reunification method. So we're intensifying our planning to be ready for an event that would, we would need to move students from this location to another location in order to be safe. And so this team has done a lot of work in the last couple of years to really even figure out another location, all the traffic routes for that location, everything in the building for that location. So there's a lot of work that goes into this. It isn't as easy as just saying, we're going to take some buses with some kids to this other place. There's a lot of planning. It's a multi-agency plan, so you look at tri-state, you look at police, you look at fire, you look at any of our counselors, we've talked to clergy, all kinds of different avenues to make sure that our students and our staff are in safe situations and have their needs addressed. So we'll be working through this. We're hoping to do a drill at some point. That is an extensive feat, so stay tuned, we'll be, we'll be working on that soon. All right, any questions? Sorry, that was a lot.
Any questions? I don't think so, thank you. I guess you're staying right there.
I'm staying right here.
Moving on to item 8.3. Jill Mason will present the contract for speech and language services for consent this evening.
Yes, so in our early childhood department, we are down 1.0 FTE of speech and language pathologists. We have contracted with one individual thus far, who is doing two days a week, and we needed to add three more days a week to make that a full-time position. So this is the contract for the other half of that position. So that is what I'm here for tonight. Any questions?
Would it be the same, is it the same person going to like a full FTE?
No, it's two different individuals. We had to do two part-time, yeah. Good question.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Jill.
Thanks.
All right, for the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background materials on each item, or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda, and it will be voted on separately. Okay, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided.
So moved.
Chris, second?
Second.
All right, Chris, motion, motion was made by Chris, and Maggie seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion passes. Moving on to the board debrief. I will call upon board members and ask you to present any comments or committee reports you have. And Chris will be starting with you.
We don't have a facilities meeting until the 26th of this month. Will be our first one that we've had this school year. It's homecoming week, so happy homecoming week to everybody, and looking forward to the Eat the Street event on the Friday evening. Until I have.
All right. Thanks, Chris. Bridget.
No committee report on my end yet either. I just wanted to say, I've been speaking with a lot of students and teachers, and it sounds like we've just had a great start to the school year. So, just wanted to thank everyone in the district for just providing a really welcoming environment for all of our students this year, and really excited for homecoming this week.
Okay. Brian.
I'd like to welcome everyone back for the school year, and I want to extend a, a lot of appreciation for all the extra time that staff members put in to prepare their classrooms and get things ready to welcome our students back. And best of luck to all the sport activities that are going on for homecoming this week. And yeah, I encourage everyone to come out to Eat the Street for education this Friday.
All right. Thank you. Barb.
Just excited to see all the energy with everybody back at school, hoping for a great year. I also wanted to acknowledge the passing, two weeks ago, of a longtime former school district employee. Personal to me, because he was my middle school principal at Holman Middle School in the early nineties. Mr. Peter Taber passed away.
Thank you, Barb. Ellen.
I'd just like to congratulate cross-country, especially the girls' cross-country team. This weekend, they had a meet at Menemonee, and they took first. They ran really well. And yeah, just hoping that they can keep up the energy throughout the rest of the year. Besides that, this week is testing for freshmen through, through junior year, freshmen and sophomores are doing kind of the state testing, and then, juniors are doing an ACT prep. Then, obviously, homecoming. Everyone's getting the mood. Hopefully, we can take our first win of the season this Friday after Eat the Street. And besides that, yeah, school's just been starting well. I've been hearing a lot of students, so happy to be back, and everyone's just kind of getting back in the swing of things, which is great.
Okay. Maggie.
Yeah. Happy homecoming week. I'll echo that back-to-school energy has been really great this year. I was able to attend kindergarten kickoff with my own kindergartner, and it was adorable. And I was also going to congratulate School Nutrition on their visit from the Assistant State Superintendent. And then, I was also just going to take a second to thank Stacy for all her assistance with my many logistical questions and getting up to speed in this position. So, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Maggie. Yeah. I have a few things I just wanted to note. So, committees will be starting here at the end of September. So, facility services will be starting on September 26th. Personnel and governance will be meeting October 5th for the month of October. And then, in November, in November, we will be moving that to the third Wednesday of the month. The finance committee will be meeting on October 10th, and the SALT committee will be meeting on October 17th. I also wanted to note that if anybody has not yet seen our, the referendum website, I encourage you to go to holman referendalfacts.org. I feel that the website was done very, very well, and it can answer many of your questions, and you can find many facts there. Also, in regards to the referendum, there's going to be three listening sessions that you can attend. The listening, the listening sessions are occurring at the three buildings where the majority of the renovations will be taking place. So, there is one at Evergreen on October 12th at five, one at the Holman Middle School on October 18th at 5:30, and one at Viking Elementary on October 26th at five. So, I encourage, encourage most, if not all, board members to try to attend these sessions, if possible, to learn more. Also, homecoming week. It's a very busy week. There's, there's a lot going on this week. I, I hope everybody's enjoying what's happening. I know there's dress-up days happening. There's going to be a parade on Friday at 1:15, 1:30.
Yeah, move to 1:30.
Okay. Thank you. Eat the Street is happening from four to eight at the Friday night, and then, and then the football game at 7:00 PM. So, and then, on Saturdays, the homecoming dance. And lastly, I just wanted to note that the vaccinations for COVID-19, they, I was able to make an appointment as of today at a local pharmacy. So, you can go to vaccines.gov and find a location near you to get your booster shots with the new Omicron variants in it. The Pfizer vaccine is for ages twelve and up, and the Moderna for age eighteen and up at this time. So, if you are eligible and interested, I would encourage you to do so. And that is my announcements. Moving on to the board meeting schedule, we have our next board meeting at, on September 26th. The meeting after that will take place on October 10th. Then, on October 24th, we have the budget hearing at 6:00 PM, followed by an annual meeting, followed by a board meeting. And lastly, on October 27th, we have the 2022 Wasby Fall Regional Meeting and Workshop in, on Alaska. So, is there any other business that needs to come before the board at this time? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Bridget?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Chris has moved. Bridget has seconded to adjourn the meeting at 7:30, 8:00 PM. Motion carried. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, signify by saying nay. Motion passes.
All right. All right.